Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 10th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And the first thing I would ask is if you have pagers or cellphones, if you would silence those now, please. If you are not the applicant and you're here to discuss a case with us today, whether you're in favor of it or opposed to it, would you please complete one of these little slips? They're available on the table outside the chambers, and we would be happy to hear you. And with that, Russell, minutes from the last meeting?
I abstain.
Do they have a motion for the...
I'll wait until the chairman votes.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the October 27th minutes. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
On item three, continuance request, we have one uncontested request for continuance, which is item 18, SBU D. 631, a request to continue until December the 8th.
Is anyone here today to talk to us about number 18?
Moving to continue.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the continuance. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Bob, you voted?
Yes.
Now you are.
And we have...
Additional continuances.
We have six new requests for continuance. These are items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 17, all requests to continue until December the 8th.
Now, I know someone came to talk to us on item eight today, and we'll hear you in just a moment. Did anyone else come to talk to us today about items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, or 17?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. William D. LaFortune, 2100 South Utica Avenue, Suite 210 in Tulsa, 74114. And we request a continuance today. I represent the applicant, SBA Communications, and working with staff. The reason for the continuance is to get more information to staff on the issue of site selection and the process by which we went about selecting a site, other sites that were considered. I think there's some legal issues that have been addressed over the past several weeks that led to staff recommendation. We've been working with staff on that for clarification. We appreciate the work they've done with us. They've been very, very congenial to explain the recommendation in their most recent staff report and suggested a continuance would be appropriate for us to get a very specific set of facts concerning site selection and how this came to be the ultimate site. I have worked also with the neighborhood. Mary Overalls, the president of the Persimmon Hill and Neighborhood Association, I've had several conversations with Mary. She's in agreement with this continuance, and in fact is happy that it's being continued so they can gather more facts also and work with us and let us answer some questions they have.
Okay. We're talking about item nine in our agenda?
Yes, it's SBU D. 639, sir. So we request a continuance to December 8th.
So there's no one in opposition to the continuance today, is my question? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you know other comments on the...
We do have a gentleman signed up on number eight, which is request for continuance, and he apparently traveled quite a distance to see us today, so I at least want to hear what he has to say.
Let's do that, please.
Mr. Field. And this is... Are you here for item six?
Thank you for allowing me to address this.
That's item six.
Chamber.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want my name and address?
Is that correct? I've got the wrong number. I'm sorry. Mr. Ferguson, right?
Yes.
I apologize. I have these out of order.
Oh, Paul. You want my name and addresses?
Please.
My name is Charles R. Ferguson. My address is 35279 Pleasant Valley Road, Wester, Oklahoma, 74966. So I drove a couple hundred miles in order to present my feelings on this proposed rezoning. I was born and raised on Southwest 9th Street in Rockwood, and I watched that area from what it was then to a muddy old log river we used to go down fish on, and watched the city invest millions of dollars to clean that up and develop it into a beautiful, beautiful river and park. Southwest 9th Street is really only a block from that park and the river. Southwest 8th Street was an alley when I lived there. Somebody's designated as a street, 8th Street. We've got people and lots of this proposed rezoning that are only, if I have my figures correct, about 90 feet from this park, from this beautiful park you have down there. I drove down Agnew and saw the entranceway from Agnew into the river park down there with looked like soccer goals, nice green area there. And right next to the drive-in is a junky heavy industry steel girder type thing with welders. It's a place like a junkyard. Somehow they got rezoned, and here you drive by this beautiful park that does something that's nice. And I don't want to see this area rezoned at the light industry. I was told that might possibly be contain things like storage tanks for liquid products. I don't know whether that includes diesel or anything about that. But what I foresee in that area and what I think the city foresees in that area when it designed all this is condos, townhouses, people with families, kids can walk down to that park, play down there, contributors to this city. My property is, question is, 27 and 28. It's 50 feet from the proposed rezoning area. My property is not actually in it, but it's 50 feet to where the boundary is. And I don't know what I'm going to do with my property if a junkyard is allowed to build in there or something junky. My property's going to be good for light industry. People are going to move in there with their kids, live next to that. The Gonzalez family lives adjacent to the proposed rezoning. Young people, hard-working people, got two little babies, preschool in there. And if this is rezoned, you've got whatever the person who wants to use that can put right up next to their fence where their kids are. I just don't see that as the intent of the city after all the millions of dollars have been spent in order to clean that up and make it a nice place for people to visit. I have spoken to the Gonzalez family who lives right next door to the proposed rezon. He can't be here, he's working. She's got two little babies, she can't come today. I know I can't speak for the Gonzalez's, but I can tell you what she told me. She doesn't want this, little kids running around out there with whatever next door to them. I spoke to Mr. Wilson, spoke to Mr. Lambert also, who live close to that area, and actually they're not here. He's working, he's got, can't be here today. And they're opposed to this as well. And looking at the lots that's proposed to be rezoned, lots 14 through 9, are within 90 feet of the park. Why would you want to allow somebody to build light industry 90 feet of a beautiful park that spent all his money on? So I would ask this group of people, look at this very seriously before when you decide what you're going to do about this. Look what you've spent. Where do you want this really to go? We want, Oklahoma City wants light industry, everybody wants light industry, adds jobs. But I just don't think that is the right place for them. I don't have anything else to say. I appreciate you taking the time to present my case.
Thank you for addressing us. Thank you for making the trip...
Yes, sir.
...to be here today. We will remember your comments when we hear the case in December.
I will say one thing. I learned about this meeting through somebody that lived in the area. I get my taxes and all that mailed to me in Wester, Oklahoma, but I didn't get notified. I don't know how that happened. I didn't get notified of this proposed zoning. So I hope that probably can be corrected where I'll know when your next meeting, you have rescheduled this to be heard again in this...
It is set to be heard, I think, on December 8th.
December 8th, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question on number seven. It's just a, I'd like to know why we're delaying that, and I think Tim maybe can answer that for us.
Yes, sir. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the bank. We received some comments from the staff concerned about some of the sidewalks in the area not meeting the ADA criteria, and so we've opted to defer and let us get a chance to go out there and look at them and perhaps look at them with the inspection staff to make sure everything's okay before we come before you.
I drove through that area this past week, Tim, and there's a lot of that netting that's tore down. There's a lot of dirt and mud in the streets. You know, before I'd recommend anything on that thing, I'd want to see that thing cleaned up and some of that, the netting put back up like it needs to be.
Yeah, the erosion control. We'll make sure I pass that one.
I just wanted to make that comment because, you know, I will go back out there and look at it again before...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? A motion on the additional continuances? Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Is the applicant for Colony Point here? Would you come up, please? Give us your name and address.
Rowan Byrd, 2301 West I-44 Service Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73112.
Thank you. Is there an urgency to hearing these today?
We are under time constraint on one deal that we have working over there, yes.
Well, my concern, and it may only be my concern, is that I just got information yesterday, had a brief conversation with you yesterday. I'm not sure I understand how these changes fit in the context of what we're doing out in that part of the city, including Village Verde and your project together, because at least when I worked on both of those PUDs, and I spent quite a bit of time on them, there was a context for the area. It wasn't just one or the other, because they back up each other coming from Piedmont Road East into Oklahoma City and actually on both north and south sides of Northwest Highway with respect to Village Verde. And I'd like a chance at least to go back and look at what both PUDs say in more detail before considering the case, but that's me. I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
I don't know if we can confirm that, because when we talked yesterday, I had just received and printed out, you know, what was sent by email, and when we talked, I hadn't looked at anything. And I think that I just started saying about this and that and the other. After we hung up, I thought, you know, we've said this at this commission over and over and over, any information that comes at the very, very last minute, we shouldn't hear it. It needs to come in the ordinary course, have the staff review it, have the staff look at it, et cetera. And in my opinion, just my sole opinion, was that this is probably one that needs to be continued because, like Commissioner Yocel said, I'd like to go out there, you know, but I have other business to do and other things to do, and I haven't even physically seen what it is you're doing, how it's located, where it is, how it is, an example of a sign that Val Bodie, I think it is, that has a sign up there. I'd like to see how all that fits in together with your request for a modification of a PUD that we did really work hard on. We, you know, we worked those things. And so this is the other consideration, is that I'm not prepared to voice an opinion about your application because, I started thinking about this last night, you took over a property that had, somebody, you know, said, "I'll agree to do this." There's two 20-foot signs, and that's what it is. Now you're making it into parcels. We have an example that is going to come up at some point in time, that big property north of Quail Springs Mall, you know, that's been flipped, I understand, and we worked a year on that, I don't know, a long time, with all these elements, all the neighbors were saying, you know, "Okay, now we've done it and we've approved it." Here they're going to come again. And so if we just arbitrarily revised PUDs, you know, on a case, I think that we need to have some sort of idea what to do about those. Because, I mean, you're, I'm sorry, I'm speaking kind of over years, but thinking of others that are out there with the economic downturn, these guys couldn't, they couldn't do it. But they have a PUD that has all these things. So what do we do when all the neighbors, everybody around it was, were involved in the process, and they said, "Okay, I can live with that"? Well, it's off the table, you know. So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to, I'd like to have you continue this until the next meeting. I want to go out there, I want to, you know, have us to maybe kind of consider what it is we do philosophically with this kind of a revision of a PUD, and then kind of get a handle on it so that we really do know how to deal with this today with your application or next, you know, and in the future. So I would prefer a continuing.
There's one set of structures that's, I think, on the eastern edge of Colony Point now. It's a small shopping center complex, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's part of Colony Point?
Mm-hmm. That's part of Colony Point, which was approved, two signs of 20-foot maximum on that two and a half acres, which is the same approval that we have for 25 acres.
I'm concerned about the building signage. I don't know if anyone else has looked at it, but they're mural-like signs, and they're huge. One in particular covers a very large percentage of the front of the structure. And I can't imagine that we had approved that sort of, you know, building signage. And I'd like to know about that as well. So I mean, there are just things about this project at the moment that, once the issue was raised, I now have more questions than I have answers, but that's...
I just, I met with Roan and his partner the other day, and the engineer. Generally, I like their plan. I mean, what they're planning to do, because it does provide me what I looked at. I understand that we made, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with your position. I'm saying that there was a bit of perhaps delay for Roan and his crew that was brought about. I was out of town. He called me and tried to meet. I had to be, I was gone for a week, and so we met the soonest time we could. I made some suggestions about, but the plan was fairly well-baked. It is unfortunate that, but for that, perhaps maybe some of these considerations might have been brought to us in a more expeditious fashion. But generally, I think that, given where we, what may be across the street and what they're proposing and committing to build, is pretty, is a good plan. Again, not addressing what the concerns about the commission about getting a holistic view, because now, that was one opportunity that they did have, is I did get a bit more holistic view about both of those parcels in those two PUDs, the number of signs, where they're going to be, who's, how they're going. So that part I did come away, because as you, Bob, you know, my initial word to these guys was, "Well, we want more signs." I said, "Well, good luck." So, but the plan is, the plan has some commercial and rational sense, to me at least, and it probably was undersigned. Not that I, I didn't really say that. Don't tell anybody I said that. It might have been undersigned at the outset, but I certainly leave it to the commission, the whims, in consideration of the commission.
And my position isn't that...
It's too much too late.
It's just too much information too late for me to actually get my arms around it and feel comfortable casting a vote one way or the other. So, Nick?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with basically what's been said before. In my case, I had a very brief conversation this morning, the applicant. I did not receive the email, everyone else did. Our email was down for a couple of days this week.
Oh, it probably got flooded.
I have not had a chance to look at this. You make a very good point. We spent a appreciable amount of time on this original PUD. We spent even more time on the large PUD to the east. There was a concerted effort at the time to integrate those. I really do believe we need to step back and make sure that this is consistent with that. From my brief discussion this morning, I, and I haven't studied the handouts that we have today, I understand that's what's probably in the email, but I agree with Commissioner Hensley. From what I, my brief discussion this morning, what the applicant outlined to me probably makes sense, if it's consistent with the other things we've done. But I would like to have the opportunity to study that and confirm that. In that regard, one more comment on the continuance. If you recall last meeting, we went ahead and approved the plat on this. So as far as proceeding with site work and whatnot, there wouldn't be a holdup by continuing sign issues. I agree, though, probably may be a holdup if you're negotiating deals with potential tenants. I hear that, but I really believe we need a little more time.
Well, and I thought we were pretty clear a couple of weeks ago that we wanted the information and plenty of time to consider it. What have you got working specifically?
Well, as you, I can't remember who all was here when I actually, and actually I took that into the Board of Adjustments anyway, but I have McDonald's and I have a bank. And then, of course, we did Roadstar Fuel on the corner, but that was out of the PUD, which was already zoned C3, and they're up and running right now.
Yeah, I see that they're open.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that we just need more time with this. I think, you know, I have some, maybe more of the philosophical issues, but I also did not receive any email, and so, I mean, I just don't have this information. I think we need more time.
I will say that, you know, I came in, you know, I've done quite a bit of development, and I've come in and I wanted to work with the city on this. I mean, that was my game plan. So I came in, I've taken all the steps proper, because I know there was a PUD in place, and I did inherit it, as Mr. Bright said. You know, we came in and wanted, and we came in and tried to come in and rezon this in a SBU D. application, and I feel like personally, if you look at our exhibits, I know there's, I understand your position on signs, and I want to respect that, and I feel like we'd almost be making a precedence out here, because these are only eight-foot signs with brick, you know, a brick-based bottom with 75 feet of landscaping at the bottom of each base. So, I mean, if you're concerned with signs or you're concerned with making changes, you know, I know how it goes, it's a domino effect. You know, I mean, one guy comes in and wants an issue and wants to change a PUD, and then the next guy wants to go, and that's your concern. But I do feel like I would be making a precedence out here in regards to signage.
Well, the precedence issue is, doesn't, I mean, I'm not focused on that. That's not what my, what my personal concern is. My personal concern is what I've already said, which is, I haven't had enough time to answer the questions that have been raised by the information you've given. I got it yesterday afternoon at, what, 4:00 or something, and we're here at 1:30 today, and like everyone else, I have a life and a business to run, so...
Well, what actually happened was, as Mr. Hensley said...
Well, you had to wait for him, or at least you chose to wait for him, not...
And we didn't, we weren't under the understanding that there wasn't going to be two meetings this month, so, because of Thanksgiving. So I guess if you all need a continuance, I guess I'm just going to have to roll the dice and let's continue.
You can go ahead with McDonald's. I mean, we're going to, we're going to find a way to work with you. We just need the time to look at the data and figure out exactly what...
Just for the record, with and regards to her, and I do a lot of business with McDonald's, she, to give you an idea of the actual signage that was in place here, she was pretty adamant because she was falling on a state highway. You know, this is State Highway 3 and the intersection of State Highway 4. She was, she thought that she was going to be able to get, when she was doing the deal, she was going to be able to get, you know, highway-type frontage signed, you know, which it, and then, of course, it fell on a PUD, and that's the deal. And she had to live with it. I do a lot with her, and she likes to do stuff with developers she's worked with. I got a variance approved for her to be on the Roadstar pole sign to appease her, but if that didn't happen for her to land here, she had told me that she was going to have to take my, one of my full 20-foot monument signs to herself, and that's a 1.2-acre user on a 25-acre, you know, 25-acre development, and then I'm left with one 20-foot acre, I mean, I'm left with one 20-foot monument sign of a total of 200 square feet for the rest of the 23 acres.
Of course, that's not what we gave you the 20-foot sign for either. That was for multiple tenants.
Now you raise another issue and question. The variance that you obtained from McDonald's, what does that allow for? What's the signage there?
It, what, that actually keeps me from having to get, actually obtain another monument sign on this development, because I, they granted a variance for her to be adjoined with Roadstar on the pole sign on the corner that was already zoned for C3 and already allowed pole sign.
So she's going to get a golden arches on their pole sign?
Correct.
Yeah. She's basically has an off-site sign.
Correct. That's what the variance was for, yes, sir.
Thank you.
She's pretty well-covered already.
She is covered with signage, yes. But, but saying that, she's on a site right today, and if I lose the bank deal, she's, because, I mean, this deal's not done yet. I mean, I'm fighting all kinds of stuff, getting her, you know, information left and right to get corporate on board with the site. I mean, so I'm, that's where the timing comes in jest here, because the bank's putting a threat on me that they've got three other parcels picked out around in this area that they can, that they can go to, and they're just, you know, I'm not saying they're, I don't know if they're telling the truth or not, but I mean, when I'm sitting out there in this part of the world and I see all these corners and intersections that are vacant, I got to believe what they're saying. So I'm a little bit under time constraint, but I guess if we, if we need to hold off, I mean, I'd rather get approved than, than, you know, get shut down here today if that's what, if that's what's going to end up happening.
Well, we have a little experience with McDonald's ourselves, at least Commissioner Bright and I do in our Board of Adjustment history, and they were perfectly happy to go into Bricktown with essentially no signage because they wanted to be there. So we respect what they want, and we want to be respected for what our city...
And I agree, but it is, I don't, I don't want to bring up my experience with them or that again to try to use against, but going to Bricktown and going to...
I understand the difference, but businesses do what they're required to do in zoning districts where they want to be. Motion, Commissioners?
Okay.
Move to continue for December 8th.
Okay. We have a motion and second to continue items 15 and 16 to December 8th.
14, 15.
14 and 15. I apologize. 14 and 15. Cast your votes, and it's continued.
Thank you all.
Are there any other continuous requests from the public? Okay, we'll go on to the consent docket.
We have two items on the consent docket today. Item one is C. 6311, which is a final plat of Valencia Edition, Section 7, and item two, PUD SP 1438, an application for a specific plan. Board 7.
Anyone here to address us today on items one or two? Gave a motion, we have a second?
Second.
A motion and second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
On items requiring separate vote, item three is SBU D. 641, an application by Kenneth Matting to rezon 6601. Matting to rezone 6601 Southwestern Avenue from I-1 Single Family to O-2 General Office in Ward 5.
Is the applicant here? If you would please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Don Lad. 6408 South Lee, Oklahoma City. I'm with Churchill Brown Realtors. I represent Mr. Matting.
And this is a single-use spud application, is that correct?
Correct.
And you understand you'll need to meet the parking regulations?
Absolutely.
Okay. No one has signed up, Commissioners?
The only thing I wondered if I could on this was, is this access...you're going to have an access, I guess, out onto Southwest 65th, right?
There is currently an access on 65th.
Is that being used as a home or a...is that a house driveway, or is it going to be your...
It's a house driveway, yes.
But it'll be one of your access points for your business, right?
The house is being purchased by a real estate, I mean, an insurance agent.
Right.
And he intends to put an entrance from off of Western.
Well, where does 65th...I mean, obviously, it goes back to the, I guess, the west back there. I'm just wondering if we ought to fix that where we don't interject traffic into the neighborhood. I'm always a little sensitive on that, but if it's not that...
Well, we could close that drug, eliminate that driveway, or eliminate the curd cup on 65th.
Well, I don't know that I want to do that. Maybe it's just to build it where you build the ones where you're right turn only out of there. I mean, I don't want to...
How do you get in?
Do that, JJ?
If you can see on the area of the drive on 65th, it leads directly into a residential garage.
Yeah.
It will be employees' parking space.
So we're not going to generate a lot of traffic out of it one way?
In and out like a residence.
All right. All right, well, in this case, that's probably all right.
Okay, no one has signed up?
That was what Commissioner Hensley said, was that on the rendering that she provided in the application, that particular driveway doesn't exist. It was a straight line. You know, I mean, so that was my question, is that this drawing appears to be to eliminate the driveway.
That drawing was submitted by the purchaser, and I assume that's what he intends to do.
But what I would...I mean, I think that the concern would be is that, I mean, you have parking for nine people in the front of the house that you're going to create. And to the extent that there's other people that want to go into the back door, you could use that for customers as well, even though the application said employees only. How do you prevent that from happening for people driving up and down the street? That's what I want to avoid. I want all the commercial traffic to be on Western. And I don't know how you're going to do that.
Well, the purchaser didn't come to the meeting, so I don't know exactly how he intends to do that, but...
Well, you know, a sign, employees only, or something like that?
An employee park said there's not room for another car, so...
That's true. Well, maybe two.
And it's probably...
And it probably goes into the garage.
Well, from visibility point of view, though, it's not going to be what people see when they see the insurance company office. They're going to see it coming along on Western.
And so I'm okay with that. But my next comment was, the wall to the west you described is going to be a variety of substances: wood, stone, I mean, all these. I really would like to know, you know, two things about...well, one about the wall, what it's going to be made of specifically.
You're talking about a wall to the residents and to the building?
A wall between this business and the neighbor to the west.
I have no idea what he intends to put up there. There's just a fence there now, just a regular fence.
Well, let me see.
That's all it has to be, really.
Don't we want to know what it's made of? It says, here's your options: stucco, brick, stone, wood, and/or any combination, and shall be solid and opaque. So you're okay with that? That's what...I just want to make sure that that's what's going to be constructed. Okay?
I'm sure we're there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Action? Prove approval? We have a motion and a second to approve item three. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item four is ABC 748, an application by Genghis Grill for an ABC 2, overlaying PUD 98 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. My name is Andre Ballinger. My address is 5818 East 77th Street in Tulsa, and I'm here with one of the owners of Genghis Grill. This is a company that is looking to expand into Oklahoma. They currently have 75 different restaurants within the Midwest region. They currently have seven in Oklahoma, two under construction, and looking for more locations. So I'd like to present Michael Pierce, one of the owners, and I'm sure he can answer any of your questions. I do have some menus that I'd like to show you.
Mr. Pierce, if you'd give us your address, please?
Yes, sir. 4517...I don't ever say it, I apologize. East 141st Place, South Bixby, Oklahoma.
Okay.
And we have seven in Arkansas and Oklahoma. We have a...I'm from Arkansas, as you probably tell.
No one has signed up, Commissioners? Menus are coming, in case you haven't had lunch.
Second.
Sounds like we have a motion and a second to approve item four. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item five is ABC 749, an application by Lumpy's Sports Grill 2 for an ABC 2, overlaying C3 Community Commercial at 12325 North May Avenue in Ward 8.
Hello, Senator.
Counselor in this instance?
Counselor today.
Yes. I'm David Holt with Williams Box, Porche and Bullard, 522 Fair Court Drive. I'm representing the applicant, Lumpy's Sports Grill 2. The owners are here, Richard Phillips and Chris Cochran. They're in the second row. We're here, and they are here to answer any questions you may have. But this application is for an ABC 2 overlay. The strips mall that this location is located in already has one other suite that has an ABC 2. And I think it's also worth noting that this particular suite, for 20 years, operated as an ABC 2 under a special permit that has elapsed. That predecessor restaurant was Caccina Domena, if you remember that. Staff approves. We're unaware of any protest to this point, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
No one has signed up. Move pool.
Second.
The motion and second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Item six is CE 816, an application by Chesapeake Land Company to close Northwest 58th Street and a portion of North Military Avenue in the Meadowbrook Acres Edition in Ward 2.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, Tim Johnson and I are here. Dan LaDon is also here. And I, prior to the meeting, was able to talk to Rob Littlefield, who's here on Bath Neighborhood. Prior to this hearing, the staff advised me that they had received a support letter and also a letter of protest. In regard to the letter of protest, the bank president was not available, talked to his associate. He indicated he was going to be here, and so I'll let him speak for himself. But from our standpoint, this is a continuation of the plans that you all have heard a lot about. We were able to acquire the last houses, and the closing of 58th Street will allow us to have flexibility in regard to our parking, also additional uses. And so we're here to answer any questions if you haven't.
Well, we do have two people signed up. Janice, do you want to...all right. Give us your name and address, please.
Rob Littlefield, President, Meadowbrook Acres Neighborhood Association, 1148 Northwest 56th Street. And we are not here today to protest this application. I agree with what Dennis said, it's a part of the plan. We do have some just concerns that we want to bring up, some things that we want to get on the record as this project moves forward to help simplify solving some issues. One of them is a request that we have from a direct, specific neighbor. The property at 5808 North Military Avenue, which is the last remaining property in the far northwest corner of the neighborhood, has requested if it would be possible for Chesapeake to erect a construction fence along their north boundary. The houses to the north, one of them has been removed. They're too yet to be removed. They're feeling very vulnerable. They've lived there for decades, insulated with these neighbor properties. And I would be really grateful if Chesapeake would be willing to erect a construction fence for them as soon as possible. One of the questions that the neighborhood has with closing this, we worked very hard to accomplish a no parking any time zone that's along the west Military Avenue and north side of 58th Street. The purpose of us accomplishing that was to minimize the opportunity for patrons of Class and Curve to park in the neighborhood. What's going to propose to be replaced is a cul-de-sac at the top of Military Avenue, and we were just wondering if the no parking zone can be extended along that because of the work that we've done, or is a cul-de-sac already considered a no parking zone? But we'd appreciate if we could get some information on that. One of the concerns, just to get on the record as the process moves along, is the neighborhood is concerned about the condition of the sanitary sewer system along Northwest 57th Street. It's antique, and it's had multiple problems over the past few years, so is 56th Street. Future development on this vacated property, just want to make sure and get on the record that we can look at that as the process moves along to make sure that it doesn't negatively impact the residents in the neighborhood. The biggest issue, I think, that we have, that we want to find a resolution for, and the residents of the neighborhood and the existing commercial folks in the neighborhood, which would be Sonic Bank, Camille's Restaurant, there's a hairstylist, a dentist office that are on the west side of Western Avenue, 57th and 58th Streets and 56th Streets are the three ways that neighbors can get in and out of that neighborhood. It is absolutely virtually unsafe, totally unsafe, and practically impossible to make a left-hand turn off of Northwest 56th Street onto Western Avenue. And at Northwest 57th Street, there's a very peculiar pattern in the way Grand Boulevard and Western 57th meet. It's very difficult there as well to make a left-hand turn to go north. So the patrons of the businesses and the people that live in the neighborhood, to safely get out of the neighborhood, have been utilizing 58th Street. So losing that, we wind up with 57th and 56th. 56th has been proven to be in violation of line of sight rules, given its speed limit and the distance. 57th Street, as I mentioned, is downward. And so what we're hoping for with the approval of this application is that between now and council, the players, the neighborhood, Chesapeake Energy, these businesses that are interested in traffic, to sit together and work up perhaps a temporary solution and a more permanent solution if and when, from the old tapwork site down to deep fork gets developed commercially. We perceive that what will happen there is the same regard as the Whole Foods area. You know, the whole problem will get fixed. But that development is, in everybody's heads, there's no plan yet. We perceive that it will eventually happen, but until it does, we don't have a safe way to get in and out. And if we could come up with a temporary idea, as I said, before anything is developed on those, that Western site, and then maybe work together for a permanent solution after it is developed. But that's the biggest concern, I think, for the neighborhood, is finding a solution to the traffic.
Well, going through your list, I'm sure Chesapeake will put up a construction fence. I can't imagine that's an issue. Dan can say no if that's not going to be the case. As to the no parking zone, that's a traffic commission issue, which you'd actually have to get them to vote on.
Okay.
As is probably the solutions to your ingress and egress issues. The question I think you're probably asking is, is Chesapeake willing to sit down with the neighborhood and the city staff? In the case of the sewer, it's Public Works, and I know they're already concerned about that in your neighborhood, and those are not land use issues to us here at the Planning Commission. But, I mean, we can ask Dennis and Chesapeake if, between now and council, this, sit down and try and work through some of these issues.
That's the goal.
Once 58th Street is closed, it's closed.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
And then that's...that is gone as far as an option for you.
We're looking for a planning goal for the future, and the opportunity to meet and come up with some solutions would be great.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer the question, Chesapeake is more than willing to sit down between Planning Commission and Council and work with the neighborhood, not only on traffic, but the other items that Rob has listed here. We'll try to work with them and work through whatever questions or issues they have.
Okay. Is that satisfactory?
Very much so.
Okay.
I have an observation. On the intersection of Northwest Grand, Western, and now you're 57th Street, and that's becoming clear to me, that's your way out of there is 58th. That's just what it is. I don't know how many times I've said, and other people on the commission have said, that intersection is a junkyard intersection. And I don't know how many times it has been said, quote, "We're working on it." Not one thing's been done. Whole Foods is open. Not one iota of anything has been done to help businesses along Western or just to help that whole thing because you now have traffic now pouring in, not to just the Chesapeake campus, but, you know, the businesses to the north of that, and then Whole Foods. Here's all that is. And now here comes Class and Curve. You've got just a conglomeration of significant traffic, all of which, you know, is going to go up and down that particular intersection. So just so you'll know, we've not been silent on this commission about that and have seen not an iota done, even though Mr. Johnson did say, how many times, Tim? We're working on it. We're right on top of it. I sympathize with you, and I hope that perhaps with all this development, and then if this closes off, then maybe somebody's going to say, okay, we've got to fix it.
That's our goal today.
I mean, that's...it has to be done.
And I'd like to make it clear that it's not a matter of convenience or complicated new green vehicle. It is 100% safety.
Yeah.
100%.
I agree.
Just one real quick question.
Sorry.
Sir, you've said a lot. And I've read your letter. Just to be clear, the Neighborhood Association, while they have these concerns, is supportive of this application?
The Neighborhood Association does not protest this application. It's a part of our plan, and we're committed to it.
Thank you. Janice?
Well, Mr. Chairman, as you know, I'm no great proponent of the closing of streets, and especially not in situations where there are people who are opposed to that. We have a letter from the bank here opposing this. However, in this particular case, I have to say, this closing is a culmination of a very long arc of planning and development and cooperation, and it is what needs to happen to make the Class and Curve project sort of meet its ultimate potential, if you will. The neighborhood is supportive of it. Although I appreciate very much the bank's concerns, its interests, and its being active in things that concern the neighborhood, I'm not persuaded that the ability of their customers to cut through the neighborhood is a negative in this particular case, or is a negative to the closing. And we have been talking about the issues related to parking or to traffic along ingress and egress out of the neighborhood. Chesapeake has agreed to participate in that process. Obviously, the city will have to participate in that process as well, as will all of the other business owners. But it really is a huge, huge safety issue for the people who live there. But it really is a huge, huge safety issue for the people who live there, and while they are very positive and supportive about everything that's going on around them, we certainly can't trap them in their homes by cutting off their safe access to public streets. So between now and council, I feel confident that those discussions will occur, and I think they will be productive. The ultimate development along Western, it is something, sorry to say this again out loud, Bob, but it is an ongoing issue with respect to the planning. Right now, there is a sort of a two-pronged plan for what will happen along Western, and unfortunately, it's funding that's keeping anything, you know, concrete from happening today or tomorrow. But eventually, you know, sort of everything south of Grand Boulevard will be one phase, and then, you know, everything north of there will be another. And where this particular neighborhood's ingress and egress falls in that continuum is one of the things I think that needs to be discussed. But those issues are ongoing. There has been agreement to participate, and I have every reason to believe that that will be, you know, an active and helpful discussion, so.
Janice, before you jump in, make a motion, if that's what you're about to do.
Well, I was going to say, I do think there's probably one other person who'd like to speak.
That's what I wanted to make sure we hear from Carson Caraway.
Hi. Carson Caraway, 5625 Northwestern, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73118. I'm from First National Bank of Oklahoma. I think you guys did receive the letter from our chairman, Mr. Pat Rooney, discussing his concerns about the road closing. In summary of the letter, our bank drive-through, you enter off of Western, it's a two-lane, one-way drive-through, so there is no way with the way the building's configured, if somebody goes through the drive-through, to then turn around and exit on Western. The bank drive-through automatically spits them out on Northwest 56th Street. If it's pretty much morning or late afternoon, it's impossible to make a left-hand turn to go northbound on Western Avenue. As we all know, that hits big population centers up there with Nichols Hills, and also up into Edmund and further development. And so, we recommend anybody that's traveling northbound and naturally do this, is that the best out is to go on 58th, take a left onto Grand, and then work your way north through those avenues. A lot of times, from my own experience, the left-hand turn lane at Western and Grand during 5:00 gets so backed up that a left-hand turn onto Western from 56th is impossible. And not to mention the oncoming traffic that's coming southbound down Western. I respect the fact that Chesapeake is doing this development. We are excited about it. I think that a little bit more forethought needed to be put in in terms of entrance and exits. Western is going to be a growing place in this city, which is great, but at the same time, we need every in and out, out of Western, to control the traffic flow that we can get. And that's the biggest concern.
We have worked as a commission, as long as I've been on it, which is 10 years plus now, to keep commercial traffic out of residential neighborhoods.
Right.
So the suggestion that we would keep this open to allow bank or other commercial traffic to travel through the neighborhood is the antithesis of everything that we've done in the way of planning, so.
Right. I understand that point, but I think the bank would only ask then that, you know, there's really two good ways to get out of the bank, either around the 58th or through 56th now, that some plan be done on that intersection of 56th, because it is a side, side going to happen.
You will have an opportunity to join in the discussion that we've been talking about, that'll occur with Chesapeake, with the other business owners and the neighborhood, and we encourage you to do that.
Perfect. That'd be great.
Thank you very much for coming down. Nick?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, just two real quick comments. One, you just covered it. In all my years on this commission, I have never heard a commercial user come forward and make a plea for routing their traffic through a neighborhood. But something more of a personal note, I went to high school in this area, and there used to be a drive-in restaurant right there, it was Split Tea. Split Tea's overflow parking lot is, or was, where the bank's parking lot is today. I can't tell you how many hundreds of times I've gone through that intersection of 56th and Western. When I was in high school, it was a problem. It's still a problem. It needs work, but I can't for the life of me deny this application to facilitate routing commercial traffic through a neighborhood.
I think, the only thing I'll say about that is that I think it is a real testament to just how bad the problem is, that they see that as their only option.
Well, James, I agree.
I mean, clearly, it's not something we can support, but, I mean, I certainly understand how they feel like they have no alternative.
I agree. Well, I'll just tell you point blank. I don't believe there is an option, most parts of the day, to turn left off of 56th Street. I think the only real option coming off of 56th Street is to make a right and then go down somewhere and find a place you can turn around and go back around north.
Motion?
I'm going to move approval.
Second.
Okay, we'll motion in a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Items seven through 11 have been continued until December the 8th. Item 12 is PC 10292, application by Jerry Guest to rezone 1111 North Bryant Avenue from R1 Single Family to C3 Community Commercial in Ward 7.
I recognize you. Hi, DW.
How you doing? Commissioners, Chairman, Counselor?
Give us your name, address, and DW for the record.
My name is DW Converse, Converse of Engineering. It's fun to be back here today. Wish we was in a better circumstances. I've bridged your TEs. I agree with them all, except for the one that comes to the conclusion that you deny it. I am aware of this site. I'm aware of what's going on. I'd like you to look at this site, see the zoning that's adjacent to this site. It's all C3. We're asking for the same zoning relative to this. The, I can tell you all about that little creek there. Having been a drainage engineer in public work for as many years, I know about the beavers we've had to trap out of there, study to look at draining that creek to get it to where it works, so it wouldn't cause a problem through the north there, problem with mosquitoes and whatever else. So as far as being a serious environmental consideration, I'm kind of mystified by that. You're on a four-lane road there. It fronts it, it's perfect to be zoned C3. I don't see any reason why to deny it, other than you're concerned about, or maybe concerned about some environmental issues that we will address at the time of development. Stormwater can handle it. Drainage just handled it. The core engineers will tell me what I can do to mitigate some of those blue line concerns. I'd ask you to give me a C3 approval.
Well, we're looking at five acres, DW. Why aren't we looking at a SPOD application on this site?
Because staff, I brought it in, said, what do you guys think? Did they go for straight zoning? They said, yes. Looks to me like it'll work, be a good deal, go for it. So I did. I've talked to your staff consequently, or since that time, and what was basically told me is that, even if you did a SPOD, I don't think you can get there, because they really want R1 zoning there. They're looking at zoning issue, or looking at the drainage issue. The drainage issue's a non-issue. I mean, that'll be handled at development. There is area there that can be developed. I was told I could look at the, asked to have the plan looked at, then basically told that the plan, let's say, yes, we've looked at the plan, we're going to stay with the plan. So I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I'm just asking you guys to look at what I'm asking and see if it's not consistent with the property in the area, the land use in the area, and to give me the C3 zoning. Like I would, I haven't talked to Commissioner Williams about this, I have not talked to anyone about this, other than to talk to staff. So staff said, yeah, let's go to us, let's go for it. I said, okay, let's move ahead.
Okay. Is Zedeir back there?
I think he is.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
You certainly may.
DW, what is the intended use for the property? What are you really going to do?
Well, I think there's, I think there's plans to acquire some property to go with this, that's adjacent to it. I'm just, I'm talking in big scheme here, and I hope I'm not giving anything away. But I think there's, I think there's plans to develop some of the other property. This is a small site, it needs to be a little bigger. You know, we've got some things going on down the street that we've, that needs to have some facilities that they can't have on that site, that needs to be had on this site. So if we had C3 zoning, not to go with a SPOD or some other, we could just have consistent zoning with the adjacent property. I think that would be what we desire.
And, you know, I.
We're not looking, we're not looking, the question was asked me, Commissioner was, are we going to have another record set? No, that's not the side at all. We're looking to do something commercial.
Yeah, I guess that's the problem I have, is that it's just open-ended. We don't know what it's going to be, and true, I see the C3 all around, that's been there since eons. We're at a point now, and it is, it's what it is, it's established zoning, so, you know, it's what it is. But what we're trying to go with, trying to plan, I'd like to see more of a definitive plan for what's going to happen. From I-3 to I-5, all the way down to Bryant, you know, and with the way Northeast Oklahoma City's developing and other areas are developing, this is in a, this is in a environmental conservation area. It has different, certain restrictions. I think that just a straight C would have a high impact, just on that area and on the whole development within that area. You've got to park to the, to the north of it. And I'd just like to see more of a specific plan, and I can't support it the way it is. Like you said, I didn't know anything about it. I was, I've been out of town, so, I mean, I wasn't contacted, but.
I understand.
But the way it's presented, I just can't, for a number of reasons. One, it don't meet within the comprehensive plan. Two, you know, I think it'll have a high impact, and I think if we could get more specific what we want to do, then maybe we could look at it, because I don't think that it's, as far as such as saying no commercial development can be in there, but just an open end, you know.
Look, I'm just telling you what staff said, and, you know, there's a precedent for this, Commissioner. The 92 and the property adjacent to this was, had the same deal, it came back and they gave us C3 zoning then. So it's not like there's, I'm asking for something that hasn't happened before. I'm just asking you to do the same thing that we have seen happen. And I understand your concerns. I just can't tell you what the real scheme is. I know what I like to see there. I know what I think would be, go along with what's going on down the street, but I can't, I can't promise that, and I'm not going to put my, you know.
You know, back there a while, back, we had a lake area, and they wanted to do some recreational thing. And they came in with exactly what they wanted to do there, and they gave a presentation, and we were okay, I was okay with that, you know. But this, I just, it's just like, it's just an open end, and I just can't support it.
Commissioner, I understand. I was wanting to give you that presentation, and I think it was a good presentation, and I think this property, if it was zoned correctly, could hopefully go along with that development. But that's speculation right now, and I can't really speak to that.
What we might have done in 1991, we wouldn't necessarily do today. A lot of things have changed in the city over that period of time, and a lot about how the citizens want to see the city grow and develop has changed in that time, too. So we have to look at things in the context of 2011 and going forward, rather than 20 years back, and say, well, okay, well, they did it then, so it must be okay to do it now. But, Zedeir, you have something you can help us with here on the environmental conservation area?
We looked at the site, and it does have some areas that will require 404 permit and COE permit, so we have made those comments in the application. Most of the property, it looks like, is in the 500-year zone, which is really not a regulatory area. We look at 100-year, there are some area is in 100-year floodplain, and they will have to meet the requirements of the drainage ordinance, means that you have to set aside area for 50-year, or now is in common, common or improved area. So that, those are the requirement already in the staff report.
And I'm, you know, my background is drainage, so.
I know.
And that's my previous supervisor, so, and I'm very much aware of what we need to do for the drainage side. And I have no problem with that. I mean, you know, I like to see it developed correctly. I don't want to see downstream flooding. I don't want to have an issue where you come back and point the finger, and make you, that's a guy that got away with putting the environment. That's not me.
Well, I think you go back to what James had to say, which is, wide-open C3 is maybe not what we want to encourage now, without knowing a little bit more about what's planned. So that's, at least, an additional thought. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Well, I mean, I agree with the comments that have been made. There is a lot of C3 in the area, it looks like too much for me, but I just don't think, you know, straight zoning at this location in an urban conservation, in an environmental conservation area is the way to go here. The fact that they don't really have an idea what they want to do with it sort of makes that worse rather than better. I think if you want to take some time and come back with a U.D. or S.P.U.D., you might get a little further, but I just don't see straight zoning at this location.
Commissioners, Chairman, Counselor, I think we're going to ask you to, if you would, make a recommendation for or against, if you would, make that motion, and we'll take it from there. Yeah, I mean, I understand you.
That's fine.
I understand everything you said.
You have that right. I understand.
Thank you.
Are you sure you want that, rather than a continuance to think about it, maybe come back with something else?
I've talked to, thank you, Commissioner. I've talked to your staff, and I think that this is where my client's sitting right here, unless you want to do something different. I think we've talked, as much as we want to talk. I'm not trying to be hard to get along, I think we need to just move ahead here. And I understand everything you've said.
Okay.
Make a motion over denied application, submit it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to deny item 12. Cast your votes. And it is denied.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 13 is ABC 745, an application by Rick Furman for an ABC 3 overlaying a C3 Community Commercial District of 3921 North Lincoln Boulevard in Ward 7.
Is the applicant here? Well, we'll move that to the heel of the docket and go on to, I guess it's.
It's not far away.
Item 16. Yeah, he's got about five minutes.
Items 14 and 15 have been continued until December the 8th. Item 16 is C 6249, which is a revised final plat of Dorchester Park in Ward 2.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Kelly Work, and I am here representing the applicant Copper Leaf LLC. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City. The, we were able, as many of you may know already, we were able to reach an agreement with the Nichols Hills Suburban Tracks, or the Suburban Neighborhood Association, Nichols Hills Suburban Neighborhood Association is their correct name. We were able to reach an agreement with them, and we have revised the plat from what it was the last time it was before you, from seven lots to six lots. We have also agreed to place a restriction in the form of a restrictive covenant on the property that will limit both the minimum and maximum size of residents that may be placed on each lot. We will be revising the plat to show a minimum 50-foot front building setback and a minimum 10-foot side yard setback. And pursuant to the terms of our agreement, we also are requesting a variance from the sidewalk requirement. One of the concerns that the Neighborhood Association had was that they are seeking to have this development and these new homes blend as well as possible with their existing homes in the neighborhood, and they do not have sidewalks presently in the neighborhood, and for that reason, they proposed, and we agreed, that we would make that request of the commission for a variance. Also, in that regard, the neighborhood was concerned about construction of detention facilities, and so they suggested, and we agreed, that we would request of Public Works that detention not be required. that detention not be required to be constructed on this property. And I understand that we, there have been some discussions between Brian Kuhn, the engineer on the project, and Mr. Agrawal already, and Mr. Agrawal may be ready to, to address that at this time, but we will be requesting formally of the Public Works Director that detention not be required to be constructed on this property. We are in agreement with the TEs that are set out in the, in the staff report, and we want to express our appreciation to the Neighborhood Association for their willingness to work with us, to try and find, and ultimately, we were able to, to reach an agreement. We appreciate the involvement of the Commission in that process, and we're glad to report that we were able to, to reach that agreement, and we're here today with the Neighborhood Association having withdrawn their objection to this application. It's possible there may be other persons that wish to speak on this. I'm not aware of any, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, let me add to what Mr. Work has said. Public Works Department is willing to accept a fee in lieu of detention, so that's been agreed to, and I get to hear if you want to address that further, you may.
Yes, I did just speak with Mr. Kuhn, and what we said, that detention requirement should be left, but will accept fee in lieu of, because of the impact, it's so little, that we were, we are willing to consider that. But if it was more density, then we might have to probably go with it. So in this case, I think we can leave the condition in there, but we will accept fee in lieu of detention.
Okay.
For the impact.
A sidewalk in front of six lots would be a sidewalk to nowhere.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This neighborhood, if you look at the neighborhood, is an old, established neighborhood, and I defy anyone to find a sidewalk.
You won't.
There, there's one sidewalk in the neighborhood, sort of, and that's at the school. But, no. Frankly, in all the discussions we had prior to this, that never crossed my mind until right at the end, when I had final discussion with Mr. Work. He brought it up, and it was like a lightning bolt. That, as much of a sidewalk abget as I am, that made absolute sense. There shouldn't be sidewalks here. There's drainage things in the front, and just, no. Doesn't make, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I kind of hate to admit that, but it, it doesn't.
Well, we'll be adding a TE4, which will say basically, say, "The developer is requesting a variance to Section 5.8.2B of the subdivision regulations, which requires sidewalks on all interior streets for new development." So that will be TE4.
Chairman, I have a couple of comments from Mr. Work over and for Public Works. The last meeting that we addressed this, I thought you guys said it was really adamant that you would require detention. I mean, it was a very clear statement, I thought. So how is it that when you say, "I think detention is required," that you now can accept a fee in lieu of that and be okay with it?
Part of it was, we were looking at at least seven lots then, not six.
Not only that.
Does that make the difference?
That, and also how much impact a national house will have in, in the downstream condition. We know that it's not going to impact peak flows getting out of that subdivision, so that's, that's the consideration we give, so we have to look at that.
Okay, good. Well, that explains it. And the second observation, Mr. Work, is that I really miss the audience that you have brought to the last meetings. There's nobody out there, so everything is pessimistic. And our third observation is, is that my support of this application is, is in play, but I just want to make a statement for public record that in no way does this, in my opinion, establish a precedent for further lot splits or anything else, and I don't think the Commission, I just want the Neighborhood Association to really understand that. This is, this is totally consistent with what the neighborhood is, and it works, et cetera. In my opinion, we're not splitting lots. We just stretched it.
In that regard, Mr. Chairman, there's a, a couple of things to, to address. This application from the beginning was all about, in my view, the, the character of the neighborhood, where it started and where it is today. I think it was, clearly was not within the character of the neighborhood at the beginning. It is now. In that regard, Bob, as far as detention is concerned, I think that's, has been addressed by the fewer lots, plus the limitation on the size of the, of the houses. The precedent-setting part of this, you've heard me say this many times, I don't think any one application sets a precedent, but in this case in particular, I don't think it sets a precedent. These five lots that we started with are five of the larger lots in the neighborhood. They're now carved up into six. They're still, they all have 100-foot or better frontage. It is within the character of the neighborhood, and I agree with you, in no way, shape, or form do I, one, believe this sets a precedent, or would I necessarily be in favor of additional lot splits. I think Mr. Work is to be commended for the work here. It took a lot. I think the homeowners association and Mrs. Axton, he commended, she worked very diligently with her members. They got there. With that, I'd move approval of the application. With, I guess first I'd move the variance on TE4, the new TE4, to vary the sidewalk.
Second.
Well, I'd like to add a comment, too. This project and process goes back a couple of years, three or four years probably, if I remember from the beginning, and it's been very emotionally charged on the portion of the applicant and the neighborhood both. And I would compliment the neighborhood and the applicant and Mr. Work for kind of juggling in the middle there to get to what is an entirely appropriate result for both the neighborhood and the applicant. And I know how much hard work and how much stress and sweat and heartache went into getting us where we are, so my compliments to everyone involved. And with that, we have a motion and a second to approve the TE number four. Cast your votes, and it is approved.
I move the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 16. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Russell, we have them approved.
Okay, it does not appear that the applicant for item 13 is here, so we will continue it to December 8th. I'll take a motion.
Move and continue item.
We have a motion and a second to continue item 13 to December 8th. Cast your votes. Janice? Thank you. Motion is approved. And that concludes the public hearing. Items, Planning Commission members, any issues? Planning Commission committees? Planning Department, Russell?
I'm not going to let you get away with it. I've got a few updates here on where we are with studies that are either directly part of the Plan OKC process or that are related to it. Just so you know, the applications for the Citizens Advisory Team closed this week. We have about 90 applications. Staff is currently reviewing those to match them with the designations that we'd assigned for the committee, so that's underway. We have a visual preference survey contract that we, we have now awarded a contract, so I think that, that went to council this week, so that's been approved, so we'll be getting work on that here in the near future. We have a retail contract. We have selected a consultant for that to study retail in the city. That'll be going to council, I believe, probably the week after next. We asked for facilitators for the Citizens Advisory Team. We did not get any suitable applications the first time, so that has also gone back out for proposals. Hopefully, we'll get more this next time round. We also took to council last week the growth scenarios study, so we'll be waiting for proposals back on that. I'm not sure what the timeline on that is. It'll be probably in December sometime, so let's look at different options for the way the city is going to grow in the future. The employment land study is wrapping up. We've been a little delayed on that because the utilities department was somewhat distracted during the summer dealing with other issues. They've been able to finally wrap up the data that they were providing to the consultants. That's now been done. There's a meeting set for December the 5th where we're going to meet with all the different stakeholders in that deal to discuss their preliminary findings and recommendations. Based on that feedback, they'll come back to us with a final report on that. Downtown housing study has been, we had the consultant in town the last couple of days, and that is now close to completion. They're going to take that information from discussions we've had the last couple of days, wrap that up into the final report and implementation plans, and they'll get that back to us shortly. And then we also took to council recently the vacant and abandoned, abandoned buildings study as well, so we have proposals in on that, three proposals, so we'll be reviewing that and hopefully making a selection on that in the near future as well, so. We have quite a lot going on as relates to Plan OKC and our general world of planning. You happy to answer any questions? And what I would hope to do at some point in the future is either, you know, brief you either on these individually, as we get more information on them as we start to get findings back, or at least, depending on what the timing is, it may even sort of amount to the, to the need for a half-day workshop or something to sort of go over it all in the context of the development of the plan. That'll be quite a ways off because these, most of the studies, you know, take six months or so.
As we begin to get those data back, I'd like to maybe see if we consider like a five-minute summary at the beginning of Planning Commission meetings when we have people in the audience who might be interested in, in what that information might be at that time. I don't want to take up a lot of time each time doing this, but as, as this information comes in in a form where we can begin to understand it, I think that would be another way to get information out. I'm always surprised at the number of people who watch Channel 20 and comment on it, so there's a lot of interest out there that we're not always aware of.
There is, there is one other study as well, which they parks master plan, so that will inform the open space and recreation component of, of the plan as well, the live OKC component. The community foundation will be partnering with the city, and parks, parks and planning will be managing that in conjunction with them, so that will go out shortly as well.
Any questions? Development Services. J.J., Colony Point. I'd like to have somebody go out and look at what's on the face of those buildings. They're, they face the west-looking direction. I'd also like to have the Valverde Master Plan and the Colony Point Master Plan, and maybe Commissioner Hensley and I might each get a copy, and we could spend some time with the applicant between now and December. I know Mike wants to do that.
No.
Yes, I could see you nodding. I thought you were nod, I thought you were nodding off, not nodding yes. Municipal Counselor's office? Nothing? Citizens to be heard, seeing none. Motion adjourned?
Adjourned.
And we're adjourned. And we didn't make 222, Terry.